We are live on YouTube.
Thank you.
Hello YouTube.
For those of you who are typing questions in the Q and A box, will you specify which campus you're looking for information from or both if it's both that's fine. We just want to make sure that you get the correct information.
All right. It's five o'clock. David, are you comfortable fielding questions for Matt? Or do you want me to start fielding questions while we wait for him?
I'm good.
Okay. I have a question real quick Heather, actually for Victor. Victor, will the Q and A, will that be saved? Just in case if someone asks a question last minute, we don't get to it. Will I be able to answer them an email later?
Uh, it's a very good question.
Like can you make me a PDF or something of it before we dismiss?
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, perfect. All right. Welcome everyone.
There he is.
Yay, that's here. Super welcome everyone. Welcome everyone to our town hall meeting. Thank you so much for being with us. We are going to answer questions that were emailed to us first and then I will get to the ones in the Q and A. If we haven't addressed them already, we're going to be moving really fast. If you have a question, please go ahead and type it in the question and answer box. So this first question, is Matt ready? Is he here?
Yeah.
Ready.
Okay, perfect. This one is for both HS and K six. The board said that masks are required all day on both campuses. What time will masks be allowed to be taken off such as during dance, PE, or recess?
According to the board's statement last night, which we are still working on a policy to craft around, masks will be worn at all times unless eating or outside is what I understood from last night's board meeting. Matt, would you concur?
Yes, and they did offer a little more leniency for the younger students for the K six campus than the seven twelve campus. But we won't know for sure until the policies are actually in place next place, next week by the school board.
Wonderful. For the high school and K six campus, Heather, you answer first, please. What is the earliest parents can drop off students? And what is the latest parents can pick them up?
Okay, so the earliest drop off on the high school campus this year will be seven thirty, just because we have to do temperature screenings for everyone. So we're going to be checking students, every student, every arrival on campus, taking their temperature and checking for any exposure possibilities. So we have to have staff on campus to do that. And then the latest that they can be picked up would be four fifteen and they will be probably outside the last fifteen minutes waiting for rides.
Matt?
Okay, we will, at seven fifteen is when drop off can begin. We will not be having walking club and some of those options we have offered in the past in the morning. And at seven thirty classrooms will open up so that students can be in their classrooms starting at seven thirty. We will also do, be doing the temperature checks, just like they are at the high school before students get out of their car. And for students that are walked up, we will be checking them before they get, go into the building. And in the afternoon, it is three thirty is the last chance to pick up. We will, are working with Rogers Activity Center to offer after school care. And we will continue to offer the other options that are available that come and pick up students at the K six.
Thank you. Matt, how will IEPs be addressed for students that are coming to school in person and going to school virtually?
Absolutely. Each of those will be dealt with, just like the IEP is individualized. Cause some students IEPs will call for different modifications. If they're in a virtual environment, then if they're on an on-campus environment. So those students that need those addressed, we will be meeting with those teachers and meeting with those parents as needed.
Perfect. This is a question for both of you. Heather, answer first. It's about virtual learning. What is it going to look like? What programs are teachers going to be using? Will teachers have dedicated time to work with the online students and respond to questions? And how often will the teachers be meeting with their virtual students?
Okay, so some of my teachers are going to be choosing to use the Lincoln Learning Curriculum that's been provided to us by the state. And that they're still the teacher in charge of that. So they're still looking at the activities that are suggested. They can add in their own information. It's just a place that has preloaded digital curriculum basically. So they don't have to figure out how to digitize everything themselves. So some of our teachers will be using that. Other teachers will be creating their own virtual curriculum. We are looking at getting tripods for all of our teachers so that they can video their classes live and have live interaction with their virtual students while they're teaching in person. And those can be recorded and posted later for kids who can't be there synchronously. What, I think I missed something in there.
Well, like how often will virtual students see their teachers?
See their teachers?
Like will they be doing live sessions with their teachers virtually?
Yes.
Like Zoom?
And I
I think it's also based on the, on the specific teacher and the specific course, exactly what their virtual learning is going to look like.
Yes.
Matt, can you kind of tell us what virtual learning is going to look like for the K six?
Absolutely. So we'll be using the learning management software, the same software that Ms. Wright just discussed, the state provided. So it will give us a more uniform look for our online learning than what we had in the spring. I will tell people it's also going to be more rigorous than the spring online learning. You know, that was, everybody was just learning how to do that where this is truly a model that's been used nationally and will be implemented. As far as, you know, as far as teacher interaction, there will be times that teacher will interact. And there will be open times for people to communicate with teacher, like open office hours, for lack of a better term. So that people know, oh, this is when even we communicate with the teacher and ask questions. You know, it does depend on percentages of how many kids just choose that option of our resources that we're able to dedicate to it.
Awesome. Still on virtual students, if they're 100% virtual, but they want to attend a specific course in person, are they allowed to do that?
Yeah, I mean, yes, they have to contact the teacher and arrange that. And then they'll still, anytime that anyone is on campus, they are going to be going through the screening process and be required to wear a mask. So keeping those things in mind.
Perfect. Matt, kind of same thing for you. If someone wants to do just their special classes in person and do all their core online?
We, we want them to select the hybrid option though.
Okay.
Because the online option is truly 100% online. You never come to campus. But if they select the hybrid option, then they get a chance to describe what they're looking for. So, but we can definitely make that model work.
Good. And that was the Google form that was shared last night after the board meeting via email. And then it was also posted on our website this morning. If anyone has not been able to find it, please email me and I can send you the link. Our next one, for the 100% in-person students on the high school campus. If they would like to stay home on Wednesday, since Wednesdays are labeled as all virtual days, will there be a attendance penalty?
No, attendance is based on engagement, not on your, is your bottom in the seat. So if you're engaging with the teacher, like if you're doing that daily activity, if you show up for a Zoom lecture, lecture, if that's what they have that day. Actively engaging is what attendance will be based on.
And how should the family let us know Heather, that they will not be attending on Wednesday?
They can just shoot me an email.
Okay, perfect.
I have a growing list.
Yay. Another high school question. What will AP classes look like for 100% virtual students? Since Lincoln Learning does not offer AP courses?
So those AP teachers will be providing the AP curriculum. Those are the teachers who specifically asked if they could film their classes as they were giving lecture to people who were in the class and have that going live so that they could have a more cohesive class, even with the kids who weren't there. And that's why we were looking at the camera and tripod, tripod model for them, for specifically those, those classes. Because there, there is no virtual option for AP through Lincoln Learning.
And for the high school campus Heather, am I correct in saying that we will be sticking to our bell schedule?
We will be sticking to our bell schedule. So you will know exactly when your class begins and ends. And there will be no overlap of lectures or assignment timeline, like due dates. Like if it's assigned that day and it's due within that period, it won't overlap into another period.
A days will be Mondays and Thursdays. B days will be Tuesdays and Fridays. And again, Wednesday is solely virtual learning. So it's kind of a catch-up day for everyone. Either principal, will Arkansas Arts Academy be changing to a traditional calendar this year instead of the year-round calendar?
No. So we do have to modify the calendar because we're losing three weeks of instruction. But we're trying to do that and maintain the non-traditional calendar as much as possible.
Perfect. And we'll be releasing that soon. Our leadership teams are looking over a draft of it before we send it out to parents. Our question for the K six, going to you Matt, can you describe what a blended scenario would look like for a kindergartner or first grader?
Absolutely. It could look many different ways, just to be honest. They could decide to come half day in the morning every day. They could decide to come on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They could decide to come on Tuesday, Thursday. We tried to leave a very open schedule to allow for them to coordinate with their high school students, to allow, coordinate with their jobs, whatever they need. But for a kindergarten, first grader, you know, they could time it where they come after lunch, come before lunch, you know, depending on what that child needs and what education. And they can also get their schedules as far as they want to know when their specials classes would be. And they can arrange around that.
Perfect. This question is actually for me. Will hybrid students that rode the bus last year be able to ride the bus this year? And will new students or students that didn't ride last year be able to sign up for the bus? So how the buses are working this year is we have offered spots to anyone that rode last year because they already had that service. We don't want to take that away from them. And we are still organizing and seeing how many spots have actually been claimed for this 2020, 2021 school year. And once we have those numbers, we'll see if we'll be able to open it up to new students. The bus is already, there's no way we can social distance on the bus. So go ahead and signing up new people for it. It's just not something that we can do right now. As soon as we have our numbers in of people that rode last year, we'll be able to tell everyone who's new to our district or just new to the bus, what our plans are for that. So just be looking out for that information. Matt, are students allowed to change their selected learning options once school starts? And how would they go about doing that?
Yes, all they're, we're asking them to do is to notify Mr. Skeleton, myself and Ms. Lewis. And we will make that schedule change as quickly as possible. Just know, don't tell us one day and then come the next day for your new schedule. You know, give us at least 24 to 48 hours to make that work.
Okay. Heather, same question on the HS campus.
Yes, you're allowed to, to submit a change. I'm asking for up to a week if you're going from virtual to in-person. Just to make sure that we have enough space to continue to socially distance and we have staffing correct. But if you're, if you want to go from in-person to virtual, let us know and give us 24 hours to make that change.
Perfect. Matt, what will outdoor recess look like? And what about indoor recess?
Well, for outdoor recess, we'll be going one class at a time. So like for, if you're in Mr. Skeleton's kindergarten class, only Mr. Skeleton's kindergarten class will be out at the playground at that time. And then we are also going to sanitize the playground equipment in between. We have got something that has been used for that purpose. So we're going to use that in between. And then as far as indoor recess, we don't want to do that if we don't have to. We want to go outside if possible. But if the heat is too hot or if there is weather, we will be doing more of an organized recess to just help control the social distancing issue.
Perfect. Heather, how many hours do you think a virtual student will be on the computer each day?
Hmm, um, that's a difficult question for me to answer without knowing what that particular student's schedule is or what grade level they are, because it will probably vary based on that. I would say a seventh or eighth grade student could be looking at three to four hours of computer work a day. If you're an AP student or a junior, senior, you may be looking at closer to five to six. But again, it will depend on the day and what their, what their course load is in those classes.
Okay. Matt, same question for the K six campus. How many hours do you think a virtual student will be on the computer each day?
You know, similar Heather, it's going to depend on the grade level. And then what all of the activities that they do that day of some of the lessons. I would guess three to four hours and that includes the completion of their assignments and everything.
Awesome. This is a question about how we are social distancing our students specifically. Are we having any Plexiglas to divide them up? Matt?
Well, we're in the classroom, we're trying to look at, you know, trying to keep them in six feet apart at all times that we can. And also we're going to use outdoor spaces as much as we can, just for change of pace and to get outside and for learning. The other thing, as far as Plexiglas, we are, we have looked at a couple of divider options. Just because all of our classrooms do have different setups and some of our classes are going to have to move to desk just because the top of table they have isn't great for social distancing and spacing. And I can tell you for therapy situations such as speech therapy, we are looking at different dividers of Plexiglas.
Okay, perfect. And Heather, kind of the same thing for the HS. We are going to be having our kids in our most open spaces. Their desks will be separated six feet. And if a teacher is going to go get them from that study hall area, it'll be in very small groups. And again, they'll be socially distanced in their classroom. Have we looked into any type of dividers like Plexiglas or anything?
We don't have any plans for Plexiglas dividers on our campus.
Okay. Matt, how many students do you think will be in a classroom at a time?
You know, all of our classrooms at the eclectic K six campus are at different sizes. You know, they could, it could range between 10 and 16, depending on the class. And depending on how big the room is and the students, the desks they're at, definitely going to be smaller. The blessing with Arkansas Arts Academy, we're already keep our class size smaller than most traditional public schools. So that helps us on this, but they will be smaller than that during this time.
Awesome. And Heather, when we do have teachers pulling for small group into their actual classrooms from the study halls, what is going to be our max on that?
14.
14, okay, perfect. Let me read through this one. If more people are opting for full-time in-person and hybrid options, how will social distancing be achieved if there are still a lot of students at the school all at the same time? That's a hard question.
It is a hard question. It gets a lot trickier on our campus for sure. If there, if there are a significant number of people, like more than 60% who want to be in-person or hybrid, then it becomes a much bigger logistical question about how we keep kids six feet away from each other and we'll have to revisit plans.
We're hoping that everyone is able to fill out that Google form that was sent out last night and this morning so that we can have accurate numbers. So we can be better at answering that question.
Yes.
Heather, can you tell us why the school is using Lincoln Learning for virtual learning instead of like a school's created curriculum?
For my teachers who are using Lincoln Learning, it's already aligned to state and national standards for all of the core classes. And so it's, it's a digitized curriculum that is already aligned to those standards for Arkansas. And rather than having to completely create a new digital curriculum, it's already created for them. I like Lincoln Learning because it's not, it's not solely a canned curriculum. So a teacher can personalize it. They can look at each unit that is provided and say, I don't like that activity. I want to add this activity that I've always done. So they can add their own materials. They can take out things that they don't like. They can do the units in a different order if they want to. So even though we're using the curriculum that's being provided by Lincoln Learning, it's not like they have to present it in a canned format. And our teachers still have control over grading and pacing and ultimately what they choose to assign to students.
Anything to add on Lincoln Learning, Matt?
The only thing I would add is it's nice to have a proven solution that other states have used already. And since the state is supporting it, all of our teachers have great support as far as getting professional development on how to use it and to implement it in the best way.
Awesome. Matt, will Chromebooks and/or iPads be provided by the school like last year?
I think Matt may have frozen.
Mr. Skeleton?
Yes, we'll, we'll those items.
Okay, perfect. And Heather, are our kids are still one-to-one Chromebooks?
Yes, they are.
Good. All right. Nurse Katie, I have a question for you. If a COVID outbreak happens at the school, how will parents be notified before sending their children back to campus?
Okay, it's an important question. So the Arkansas Department of Health is giving us guidelines right now for how we respond to these positive cases, just students and teachers that have symptoms. So what we will end up doing is follow the decision tree that the Arkansas Department of Health gives us. They are the ones that will guide us in what steps we need to take next. Our teachers will be provided health office guidelines so that they know what symptoms really need to come to the nurse. And then based on those, the list of symptoms that are symptoms of COVID-19, two of those symptoms get a student isolated on campus. And then we will contact the parent to have them come pick up that child and then that child will need to be tested. Should we have a positive case on campus, that will go out via all our communication platforms. So that both campuses are notified, especially in the event that we have one student at a K six campus or a high school campus and they have a sibling at the other campus. Because really if you're in the same home, you're considered a close contact. So that whole family would really need to be isolated until we knew for sure what that child was ill with.
Okay, perfect. And the decision tree that you mentioned, you already put on our website. What tab is that under? Is it nurse tab?
I will put it on the health offices or health, yeah, health offices site. It's under the teacher pages. You can just choose health offices and Maribel and I will use that platform to provide resources. Everything from, you know, COVID-19 to also how to use inhaler, ADHD, resources for parents, everything that would be health office related. But we just got that updated decision tree today. So as things are coming out, we will share them.
Perfect. Thank you. Heather, when, how and when will students' schedules be distributed?
Student schedules, with the exception of a handful of new students are already in e-school. So all they have to do is log in and they can see their schedule for next year. If you don't know how to log into e-school or you've forgotten, we, what we'll probably do, and Victor, I'm speaking for you, so I apologize, is send out a wide email that says, here's your login information for e-school so that you have both your username and password and can log in and see that information.
Yeah, we can do.
Thank you. Matt, when will your students know who their homeroom teacher is?
That will be closer to our open house event, because we are still planning on having some form of a scheduled open house event at the K six campus. Because at those young ages, it's still important to make those connections between the teacher and the parent and for the kid to know their teacher going into school. So we will be sending out information about that. It will be sometime the week of August 17th.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, this is a long question. So we need to kind of clarify the difference between 100% virtual and like a hybrid method. The question is, could you clarify if the virtual is completely separate or if it's tied together? So Heather, I think like on the HS campus, all of our kids are essentially doing digital learning. It's just if they come on campus, they have an opportunity for one of their teachers or one or more of their teachers to pull them into a small group. It's just if they come on campus, they have an opportunity for one of their teachers or one or more of their teachers to uh, pull them into a small group. Where they can be in person. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yeah, and I think maybe that question is focused on, like if they only want to come for a class or two. So on the form, um, for the elementary section, you would be checking the hybrid option and then explaining what you want that to look like. On the high school portion of that form, if you're wanting to only come for piano or only come for um, visual art classes. You would click, um, there's a fifth option. Yes, fifth option, and that is that you say that you want to coordinate with that teacher. So I'm not gonna facilitate that, I just can't. Um, but if you want to, um, you yourself or your student want to reach out to a teacher and say, hey, I want to be able to come in for this class. Um, you are welcome to do that.
Perfect. Um, and Matt, kind of the same thing. So if I have one student that is one hundred percent virtual and another student that's one hundred percent in person. And they're in the same grade, they'll be essentially learning the same thing, meeting the same standards?
They will be getting the same standards, but will be a different format. Cause our students that are on campus will have more opportunities, you know, for the arts integration pieces and those type of pieces. That uh, our teachers are able to implement. Uh, where in the virtual section, you'll still be on the same standard. So whenever you come back to school, either part-time or full-time, uh, you have learned the same things. But the guidance and the activity level does look different.
Okay. Heather, on the high school campus, will we be having staggering dismissal times to avoid crowding?
Uh, yes, I've already addressed that in an email. So the first students that we will um, dismiss are those who drive themselves to school. And have siblings who ride with them. And get them out of the hallways and out of the way first. Um, and then we'll dismiss uh, any student who walks at three thirty. Um, and then at three forty, we'll start car line. And we're gonna do car line, if you've been, if you've had a student on my campus for a while during construction. We had students go to the PAC and use walkie-talkies to call them out as cars drove through. Uh, we're gonna go back to that format. So students will stay at their assigned desk um, until we call for them from car line. And then they'll be able to quickly exit the building um, and go to their cars. So we're, we will have, uh, the K six has always had car tags with student names on them and grades. We will be doing that at the high school this way, this year as well, in order to make that a faster and less um, person-to-person contact point.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, can you kind of tell us about uh, school supplies that are needed for those that are gonna be one hundred percent virtual? Are they uh, purchasing, purchasing that from the school or will they be given a supply list or what's going on with that?
We will offer uh, two options for parents. We'll have a supply fee option, but for someone that's a hundred percent virtual, we will give them a list of supplies they will need during their online learning. Experience.
On the Lincoln Learning, there's a supplies list and to some, it seems that it's uh, quite pricey. For all the supplies they need. I personally have not seen the supply list on that. Can you tell us a little bit about that, Matt?
We will be sending our own, cause some of those things that are on their list are for someone that's truly using that as their, all they have. Like they have no access to a teacher, they have no access to anyone. Um, so they will be getting a list for those that elect the virtual on our, on our form. Uh, they'll be getting a supply list that they need to provide.
Okay, perfect. So they, they need to just ignore the Lincoln Learning supply list?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Um, Heather, will new students be able to take a tour of our campus uh, before school starts?
Yes, uh, so we, at the, before the end of this week is my plan. Uh, is to have a sign-up genius up for specific days where you can do a small group tour through the building. Um, for new families or for seventh graders who are moving up and their families want to have a tour. Um, and that will be uh, probably with either me or Rachel, masks will be required for the ru, for the tour. Um, and then we will maintain social distancing between each other on the tour. But yes, you will have the opportunity to tour the building.
Perfect. Uh, also for Heather, uh, how are we gonna divide up the different grade levels in our uh, three study halls? The library, the commons, and the PAC?
As much as possible, we're going to be keeping seventh and eighth grade together, ninth and tenth grade together, and juniors and seniors together. Uh, and again, that will depend on numbers of students who say that they want to be one or the other, um, either virtual or in person. But that is the goal, is to keep them separated by grade. It makes them easier to retrieve for teachers instead of them having to search three different places for someone.
Perfect. Uh, Matt, I think we've mostly answered this. It's another question about virtual learning. Will the virtual, uh, one hundred percent virtual students have a specific teacher that they're assigned?
Uh, they will have a teacher working with them, but that teacher may not be the teacher they have if they choose to come back to school. If that makes sense.
Okay, so if they change their options, they might be changing teachers in that process?
Yes.
Okay, um, will the one hundred percent virtual students have daily access to their virtual teacher?
They will have access, but that doesn't mean they will have a daily meeting with them. You know, if they'll have access to email them, but they will not be having a daily Zoom session.
And will your virtual learning be following a uh, class schedule?
Uh, well, on the, if you're truly just online learning, um, you get to pace it more at your own pace. So if you need to have more time in math, you know, uh, you can have that time. And since you don't have some of the breaks that you do in a traditional school day, you know, you're not gonna have possibly the lunch break, the recess break, those type of things. So it is possible for you to go through at a different pace than a normal school day.
Wonderful. Um, and one more question, Matt, uh, one hundred percent virtual, what do specials classes look like?
Uh, so some of the classes are offered virtually. Uh, for example, there's a visual art class, there's a music class. Um, but if you do choose virtual instruction, you will not get the full uh, array of options that we offer on campus.
Okay. Uh, this for either principal about lunch, uh, the students that have been cleared for free and reduced lunch. But they want to be one hundred percent virtual, can they come to the campus and pick up lunch? If so, do they have to do this daily or can they pick up multiple lunches uh, once or twice a week?
That is a question that I don't have an answer for. I mean, we would have to talk to air mark, I think, about um, getting multiple lunches at a time. Um, otherwise, getting them each day is, is very doable. Like we, I could even have the lunch waiting at the door for them to pick up, so they don't have to come in the building. Um, but I don't know about the multiple lunches at a time. That would be an air mark question.
Okay, we'll get with them later and we'll get back to that question when we have the time. Uh, Heather, how will your arts classes look for a one hundred percent virtual student?
Um, those arts teachers are still going to be engaging with their students. The assignments will probably be different, um, because they're, they're not in-person doing the same kinds of things. They may not have access to the same kind of tool. I can't, I can't send a pottery wheel home with students, things like that. Um, but as much as possible, they'll be hitting the same standards, the activities will be different.
Okay. Uh, Matt, frequently last year on the K six campus, uh, the bathrooms were uh, out of paper towels or soap. Can we be sure that the students will have plenty of time to uh, do proper hand washing policies and everything? And make sure that we're stocked up on that?
Yes, and many of the restrooms now actually have hand jars. So we will not have the same issue we had with the paper towels. Uh, and I know talking to SSC, who is our janitorial provider, uh, they have came up with some procedures to help us monitor those areas more. To make sure there's not a shortage.
Wonderful, thank you. Nurse Katie, uh, maybe you could answer this one for me. Uh, what procedure is in place for a student that, uh, if they're having uh, anxiety about uh, wearing the mask for uh, the entire day?
So we'd want to interfere with um, the child's learning process. Um, if there's an anxiety about wearing um, the mask. I would recommend meeting with uh, myself and administration for whichever um, campus that's gonna be on. Um, and we can see if we can find um, a solution. Um, if we cannot find a solution for the child wearing the mask, we will find a solution to try and keep that child on campus. If that's the, the, the goal of the parents. I know that there are sensory issues um, with students. I know that there are um, you know, behavioral, emotional issues. Um, the mental health coming out of everything is going to be um, another issue that we deal with regularly. Um, so if there is an issue with a child wearing a mask because of um, a cognitive issue or a sensory issue. Um, please feel free to email me, um, and we'll see what solution we can come up with.
Thank you. How will classrooms be set up for social distancing? Uh, the high school's gonna be in our study halls and uh, Mr. Young will divide up the classroom as much as possible, depending on numbers. How is this going to affect group projects or other collaboration activities? Um, probably something like choir or orchestra where we can't really meet in groups anymore, Heather?
Um. We're gonna be working with smaller groups in those, you know, like a choir within a choir and orchestra within an orchestra. And utilizing technology for collaboration as much as possible. Um, that technological collaboration is a twenty-first century skill that our students need to be really good at anyway. Um, so that, that's our goal. And then Rebecca Adler, who is our choir director, and Sandy Neves, who is our orchestra director. Um, and I have had preliminary discussions about what their classrooms look like and how we keep those kids uh, safe. And as socially distant as possible. Um, we don't have final answers for that yet.
Okay. Um, Heather, can you tell us about the uh, mountain biking class? Will that still be offered for those that are coming in person?
Yes.
All right, what about uh, virtual learners that have selected biking?
So if you are a virtual learner and you do not want to come to school to participate in the mountain biking class, uh, then your assignments, i- it's essentially a PE class. Um, so your assignments will probably look more like a log of biking time. Like how long did you, how long were you on a bike this week? Uh, where did you go? What did you do along with video tutorials on specific mountain biking skills?
Wonderful. Uh, this one was, did I hear Heather say all the high school teachers are using state-provided learning? I think that's the Lincoln Learning, uh, but not all of them are.
No, not all of them are. Um, so there are, on my campus, teachers have that choice. Um, because I've really stressed for my teachers for the past three years to try to use Google Classroom and digitize as much as possible. So some of them have fairly digital curriculums that they're already happy with, um, and can implement in a virtual environment. Others like the resources that Lincoln Learning is providing for them, and it will make their job of handling the two different um, populations. Easier, uh, and so they're electing to use the Lincoln Learning platform. I have left that decision up to teachers on my campus.
Thank you. Um, this question is about the bus, so I'll answer it. Uh, what is the bus procedures? So to, if you do get assigned a spot on the bus, I will be notifying you before school starts about that. And uh, the bus procedures are pretty much the same as getting into the school building. Your temperature will be checked, you will be asked all the COVID nineteen questions that you've been asked everywhere else. Um, masks are required for the entire ride, covering nose and mouth. And uh, we will try to social distance kids as much as possible, but like I mentioned before, on a bus, that's kind of impossible. Uh, so the, and uh, parents, you cannot just leave your kid at the bus stop waiting on the bus. Because if they get registered with a high temperature, they will not be getting on the school bus. They will need to be taken home. So please do not just drop off your students. Be sure that you wait there until that they're, until they pass the screening and are allowed on the bus.
There will be seating charts so that we know where every student is on the bus every day. Um, is that, we'll need that for contact tracing.
Yes. Um, Matt, if a parent chooses a different virtual program for their child, will they lose their spot at Arkansas Arts Academy?
Hmm, I'm, I'm trying, so if they un-enroll and go to like Arkansas Virtual School or Arva. Or the Connections Academy, they are enrolled in another school and they cannot save their space. Uh, you know, if there's a specialized program they'd like to use, uh, like for special learning need or something like that. I would encourage them to contact Mr. Skelton and I, uh, so we can look at the specific program. But if they're looking at enrolling in a different online school, uh, then they would lose their spot.
Okay. Um, Matt, on Lincoln Learning, will we be able to give the parents like a, a test drive on that before school starts? Or are we starting strong on the first day of school?
I think.
We will offer some, oh, go ahead, Heather.
I was gonna say, I think there's a, a, a student test account, um, that we could potentially give uh, the username and password out to any parent who's interested. And then you can see what it looks like from a student perspective. Matt, do you think that's possible?
I, I don't think there should be a problem with that. We can double-check with Lincoln to see if there's a limit to how many people can utilize that. But we can definitely send out something for those who'd like to try that out.
Right. Matt, how are we gonna uh, maintain safety measures on items that are used by multiple students? Such as the guitars in Mr. Shields' uh, guitar room?
Uh, so for, we have actually uh, got something from talking to SSC, who is our cleaning company. Something that we can safely spray on the guitars, it's safe for the guitars, and it also makes the guitars safe. Uh, we've also acquired something that, that we can also use for like the gym equipment, uh, violins, pianos, keyboards. Uh, so we actually have acquired uh, different things and, and Nurse Katie has done a great job researching and finding what we can use to take care of those. Uh, we definitely encourage fifth and sixth graders who choose guitar, uh, to have their own guitar, uh, if possible. Uh, cause that just allows them to take it home and practice more. Uh, but as far as the ones they use in class, uh, we have a sanitation process.
Awesome. Heather, on the high school campus, are kids that are one hun, one hundred percent in-person Monday through Friday? Will they be in the same study halls as the uh, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday kids?
Yes.
Cause we're dividing them more by grade level then. But we are going to have them in assigned desk, like with their name on it, so they will sit at the same desk every day. Um, Matt, will tutors, uh, or tutoring, uh, options be available specifically for those with dyslexia?
We will be offering uh, dyslexia therapy and other interventions for our students. Uh, we are actually working on the best way to implement that. Uh, right now, uh, we've, so there will be a plan for those students. We're just trying to figure out the safest way to do it and implement the program with fidelity.
Awesome. Uh, Heather, online courses, the ones like through uh, InWAC. Uh, will, how are those gonna look when a student's on campus or doing the hybrid option? Are we still doing online classes like that?
Yeah, so that, if a student is registered for an early college enrollment class through InWAC, InWAC controls that. Um, so they will be, like if they're on campus, they'll be sitting in their desk, uh, working on that coursework. If they're at home, they can work on that coursework from home. Um, I have no direct say or input on how those classes are run or like when due dates are or grades or anything like that. It's the, the InWAC college professor who does that, but they'll have a spot at school to work on it if they're at school.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, what will Wednesdays look like for a kindergartner going full-time on campus?
Uh, Wednesdays are not different at our campus, at the K six campus, they are a normal school day. Normal during this situation anyway.
Heather, will every high school class be livestreamed for the virtual students? And if so, um, will we have the in-person students on camera, uh, and they can interact with those that are in the virtual setting?
In-person students will not be on camera. Um, I can't guarantee that every class will be livestreamed. Some teachers may choose to film their lectures for their virtual students ahead of time um, and post them in a, that way. Um, but they will, there are times when they will probably be um, able to talk or at least hear each other's voices through Zoom or hangout. Um, during class instruction.
Okay. Uh, for you again, Heather, uh, if a student wants to do the virtual but come to campus speci- just for specific classes, they need to choose the virtual option, correct?
If they're coming to, there's a fifth option. If you want to be able to come just for specific things, you don't want to be 100% virtual. There's a fifth option on the high school form or the high school page of the form that says, I want to customize what I'm doing. Um, and then you and that teacher will collaborate on when you're coming to cla- when you're coming to school and um, what days and what times and all of those things. So don't choose, if that's what you want to do, don't choose the 100% virtual option because we won't be planning to see you at all. Um, if you have the customized option, then we'll, we will be expecting you to walk through the doors at some point and prepared for that.
Awesome. Um, Matt, what about sporting events? Are we doing any for first quarter?
I'm gonna let Mr. Skelton take that question.
Mr. Skelton.
At this point, the AAA is, it's going to maintain the uh, calendar that uh, they've created and they've used. So yes, um, but just realize that uh, a directive may come down from the governor at any time to push back or change um, the opening uh, date uh, for a uh, particular activity. Um, our coaches are having uh, practice now. Um, you know, according to the guidelines of AAA has sent us and the health state health department has approved. But yes, we are planning to have athletics this fall.
Awesome. Uh, and the mountain biking team has already been meeting and doing their social distancing rides and everything like that. So some sports have been happening. Uh, for arts events, uh, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, our teachers are going to be, at least for the first quarter, more focused on uh, technique than on performances.
That's correct. Um, we're limited right now. Everyone in Arkansas is limited right now to um, audiences of less than a hundred for performances. So my teachers have opted to either look for ways to perform virtually and post those um, through our social media and um, website and YouTube and things like that, um, or to focus on technique.
Perfect. Matt, um, how often and uh, sorry, uh, how will grades be posted and how often will they be posted?
For which option for online or?
Does not specify. So both, tell me about both.
Okay. So if they're on the in-class on, on-campus option, uh, they will, this year with our program, Teacher E's, our grade book program, they will actually be able to keep up with grades as they come in. Uh, that was an update to that program. Uh, so that will help parents keep up with lessons that they missed, assignments that they missed. So that way they can know where they're at. Um, you know, with our standard-based grading system, um, you know, a grade is, is always moving hopefully, you know, so if a child has a two, we hope they're always moving towards that three. Or if they're at a one, they're always moving to that two. Cause our goal is for them to master the standard, uh, rather than getting focused on a, an A or a B or a C. Um, also on the virtual option, uh, they will go in and be able to click to see what work they've turned in and what they've been graded. Cause actually the grading part will come from the school itself, not from Lincoln Learning.
Okay. Um, Heather, same question. How will grades be posted and how often?
Uh, so my teachers will be posting grades in e-school throughout the year, just like they would if it were a normal year. Um, and so we're using Google Classroom to manage all of that workload. So whether, regardless of what option your student picks, all of their assignments will be posted in Google Classroom. Grades will be going into e-school. Uh, we'll be sending home progress reports at six weeks and 12 weeks. Um, but the grades will be calculated on a semester basis.
Awesome. Um, what about field trips y'all? Uh, are we gonna do any? I would say no at this point.
Virtual field trips.
Virtual field trips, yes.
Places will have to be open for us to go.
Yes, I know Mr. Jones has talked to a couple of our museum partners uh, about doing some things virtually, uh, especially with our Museum of Me program that we use with some of our students. Um, yeah, I know our last year, our fifth graders took some virtual field trips. So you know, as far as the, hey, we're all going to Crystal Bridges, you know, that's not there, but virtual field trips.
Awesome. Heather, tell me about PE on the high school campus.
Um, so PE will be uh, through the biking room. Um, and I'm actually opening it up to all students who are on campus this year or so, or during the first quarter while we're in weird times. So students will have the opportunity to sign up for 30-minute sessions where they can go with the PE teacher to move, to go outside, um, to do those kinds of things and break up their day a little bit. Uh, if you're a virtual student and you have PE, you're going to be logging um, physical activity. Um, and have access to like you, um, tutorials on how to do specific kinds of exercise uh, and different wellness activities in addition to just keeping a log of what you're doing.
Awesome. Matt, will fifth and sixth graders still have two special selections?
That is the plan.
Cool. Uh, Heather, uh, high, uh, asking about assemblies. We used to have them weekly. Uh, we are not going to be having assemblies. So how, how are these students going to get information?
Uh, you and I are going to be funny on camera.
Sweet. I love it. It's gonna be great. Uh, and we'll post those virtually and uh, we can show them to the students that are on campus, uh, on projectors and such. Uh, Matt, uh, services like speech, PTO T, uh, how's that gonna work on campus and how's that gonna work virtually? Some of these are really hands-on.
Yes, so uh, as far as therapy sessions, um, when they come, if they're on campus, uh, we will just make sure the kids are socially distanced. Uh, that is one of the settings. We will be using some Plexiglas, especially when we think about speech therapy and occupational therapy where there has to be a clear view what the student's doing. Uh, as far as virtual, uh, we'll be looking at students receiving teletherapy, uh, which is where the therapist works usually through a Zoom meeting, uh, to get their therapy done. Uh, another thing to consider for those students would be to come in just for their therapy time.
Thank you. Um, sorry, lost the question that I wanted to read. Oh, this is a great question. What do teachers and staff need? How can parents help? Extra supplies, volunteers? What can parents do to make the lives of teachers and staff easier? I want to put like a big thumbs up on this question. Thank you so much.
Yeah, um, parent involvement definitely on the seven 12 campus, uh, is something that we've struggled with. Um, so if you could join the PCG this year and really like they're gonna, they want to be more involved um, and will be my outlet and Rachel's outlet for the specific things that come up as they come up. Um, so joining the PTG is a good way to stay involved in the school and help support all of our teachers and students. Um, every year, not just this year, um, but every year. And then uh, helping your student get comfortable wearing a mask is probably um, the biggest thing that will be of help to all of us right now.
Thank you. Um, Matt, a suggestion for you, can the K six kids keep the same classmates as last year so that they already know each other and help it make be a little bit more normal? Um, I don't think that we're gonna be able to do this because all of them are gonna be selecting different learning options, correct?
Yes, I can't, I don't know what everyone's gonna pick yet, but we will try to have friends be with friends as much as possible.
We're all friends.
But we're all friends, Arkansas Arts Academy, all of us.
Yes, exactly. Um, Heather, um, we said that Mondays and Thursdays are A-days. Are these going to be the same lessons being taught or are they going to be two separate A-days?
I don't know that makes sense to that question adequate, adequately right now. Um, that's going to require a whole lot of discussion with teachers. Um, and they're off contract right now and I don't want to put words in their mouths, so.
Okay, so we'll say that depends on the teacher and the course. Will we have any socializing events for our virtual students?
Uh, we'll do, I mean, we will try the same things that we tried last year, like uh, board games virtually and um, getting groups of kids who enjoy similar things together. Um, we're going to need some participation from, from kids and families who want to do that because a lot of the times it would, it would end up being Ms. Carpenter and a couple of other people or myself and a couple of other people.
Some of them just teachers as well.
Yeah.
The teachers, I just played a game.
We, we would love to socialize with those kids and set those things up. Um, so if there's something specific you'd like to see, you gotta let us know. Uh, and then when we do it and set it up, you gotta show up.
Uh, Matt, will the K six, uh, all virtual, will that be self-paced or scheduled instruction time?
Uh, it will be self-paced, but we will be telling them what lessons they're doing. Uh, so, but as far as when they do it, uh, we want those families to do it at the best time they can do it.
Awesome. Uh, also Matt, if a child needs to quarantine due to exposure, um, will they be required to change into a 100% virtual student? Uh, or how are we going to help them from falling behind?
Uh, once we have a student going to quarantine, uh, it's kind of like Nurse Katie said, we'll have to see what our reaction is going to be as a school and as a school district. Um, because some of that's outside of our control. Uh, but we will be working with those individual students to put them in the best situation to be uh, successful. And you know, if that means they need to stay connected to their class, then that's what we're gonna do. Uh, but it's also possible that, you know, the state tells us that, hey, we're all going virtual at that point. So uh, it kind of depends on the guidance we're given at that time.
Do you think that uh, actually Nurse Katie, this would be a question for you. Uh, do you think that everyone should be tested for COVID before school starts because some people are not showing symptoms? Uh, and they are still, they still have COVID? I know that's a weird question.
Sure, yeah. Now, um, that's actually something I thought about for myself was two weeks before we go back to school, getting tested. Um, but because of the, what I understand is, um, you know, slower response times when it comes to results, lower quantities of tests in the area. Uh, let me ask Arkansas Department of Health, um, because that's, that may be something that they advise closer to when school actually starts. Now that all of Arkansas has one start date.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they may come down with standard that all schools need to test their students or not because of whatever the cases are at the time. Um, so let me reach out to Arkansas Department of Health and find out. And then um, I'm going to be sending out an email, um, just about the beginning of school anyway. Um, just having action plans ready, health forms, um, that the nurses need every year anyway. Um, I will answer that in that email.
Perfect. I have two more questions, one for Katie and one for Matt, and then we are gonna have to call this meeting to an end because it is six o'clock. Um, Katie, uh, what about kids that need to take uh, pills daily uh, at the school nurse? How's that going to be handled?
So uh, Maribel and I are um, developing plans where we're reducing the number of students in our health offices. Um, so we're giving teachers guidelines as to when they need to send a student because ideally the students, not that we want sick students in our offices, but the students we want in there need to be ill so that we know what we're seeing and we're not exposing healthy kids to sick kids. Um, I am going to go find those students. So if your student has a daily med, I'm gonna go find them and give them that medicine, whether it's a pill, an inhaler, whether they're type one diabetic, whatever they need on a daily basis, I will go to that student to keep them out of my office.
Perfect. Um, and last question, Matt, kindergarten screening assessments that happen before school every year, uh, what are we doing for those?
Uh, we actually met with the kindergarten team the other day and we will be doing a screening process instead of the parent interview part where we come in and give parents a spill. We will record that. Uh, but we will have kids come in small group and we will be scheduling that uh, later in August.
Thank you. Um, it is six o'clock, so we are going to be ending these questions. If we were not able to get to your question, I deeply apologize. Um, but uh, Mr. Craig, you are going to be making me a PDF of the open questions, the answered questions and the dismissed questions. If you could, pretty please, is that, is that possible?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a report that'll be actually a spreadsheet that has the answers. But either way, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, yeah. However, I can get all of the questions that have been asked, just so I can make sure that I did answer them um, into that list who asked them, so I can go to them specifically if needed.
I'll also be getting some of, we had some questions come in on the chat, so I'll make sure and grab those too and get them to you.
Okay. Um, thank you again, everyone, for coming to our virtual town hall meeting. Uh, principals are uh, available by email and we'll try to respond to you as soon as possible. Thank you for your support. Uh, we're trying to make sure that your kids are safe and that they are learning. And please know that they are loved by all of their teachers and by everyone on the admin team. Have a wonderful evening. We'll see you soon.